Yes.
We can't hear you over here.
Okay. First, there was a reorganization. The man, the original two thousand and three version of the manual was one hundred and sixty-five pages. We eliminated any duplication of work, any, or any duplication of wording, anywhere that could be broadly interpreted, different places in the manual. We condensed it to one hundred and eleven pages and reorganized it to put everything in its order. Following along with one here, I gave each chapter, I gave as much detail as possible to summarize, including the roles and roles responsibilities and structure in which we operate because the last manual was two thousand and three, under a different form of government. So going through chapter two, it recognizes the county executive, the county council, the director administration roles, and human resources roles throughout the manual. Majority of these processes were evaluated to our current practice versus, I guess, historical practices or any practices that were never exercised. So we brought in our current, how we currently operate as far as the employment, the recruiting process, what our need for the application, how we rate the applications, and how we actually on everyday practices recruit. We brought in the broadbending, which the original manual was under the Hendricks study, which is a totally, totally different ways of rating positions, reclassifying positions and so forth, and actually even determining the starting salaries of positions. The major changes, I'm in chapter six, sorry, moving rather quickly, is recognizing the Fair Labor Standards Act. One of the major changes is recognizing that exempt personnel is exempt from the Fair Labor Standards Act. We allow for comp time, and we've eliminated that and for those exempt personnel.
What was that again, I'm sorry?
Exempt personnel, they're, they're excluded from the Fair Labor Standards Act. So you get an annual salary, usually annual salary, this is what you get paid, there's no comp. And we allow a benefit in our manual that gives them eighty hours of comp time.
How many employees are this, is this?
Exempt, I don't have the count on me today, but I do.
Is it over twenty?
Over twenty, yes.
Is it over fifty?
Yes.
Is it over a hundred?
Yes, for the, for our whole entire county, yes.
Is it over two hundred?
Yes, we have.
Is it over three hundred?
We have, we have fifteen hundred employees.
Right. And I know you don't have the exact figures, but I'm trying to get an idea.
Are you just asking what?
I think he's asking how many are exempt.
I don't have that count on me.
That's what he was.
No, I don't have that count.
He's asking if there's over two hundred or three hundred.
Yes.
What, what's it close to, what's an approximate?
It's probably two hundred, maybe, two hundred.
Two hundred exempt employees?
Maybe or less, less, maybe less than a hundred.
Yeah, less than a hundred.
Less than a hundred. Yeah, because I have to take out, I have to take out the law enforcement, they're covered by the FLSA. So they get, they receive the four hundred and eighty hours under FLSA. Then you have your non-exempt, so, and you have your corrections, which is also included on the public safety under FLSA. So it's under a hundred.
Okay, under a hundred.
Now that, he's asking, sorry.
Sorry.
All right, so to, so to clarify, I guess, since I'm a little new to this in county government, what, who is covered by the personnel manual and who's not? So law enforcement's, is law enforcement covered by personnel manual?
Some provisions of the personnel manual, except for where the collective bargaining agreement supersede the manual.
And board of education is separate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Where do at-will employees fall? So just at-will employees, do they fall under any particular category as exempt or not exempt? Do they fall in the same process, right?
It's, it's basically no.
Okay, the only difference there being in, in how they, how they may go if that need be, am I correct?
Yes, there's a, we have a suggested progressive disciplinary process in the manual in which they have grievance rights under the manual. So if you are included in that benefit, then you have those grievance rights. And it's clearly, this manual will clearly spell out between that and the charter, who is exempt from them, they call personnel system.
What were some of the reasons for changing that to exempt the at-will employees or the exempt employees from receiving comp time? Was it cost savings, is it a standard practice among other, other governments and businesses?
It's actually standard practice that if you're an exempt employee that is excluded from the Fair Labor Standards Act, you're paid a set salary to do a job. And you can only deduct them in full day increments as far as missed time. You're supposed to use managerial practices to correct such, you know, problems as far as time. You would not treat them hour for hour.
Michelle, please talk to the microphone, we can't hear you.
Sorry, you would not treat them as hour for hour. So to me, when you're doing, using, you're calculating as comp time, you're almost treating them hourly. And then it's taken away from that full day increment of an exempt personnel.
So I know Purdue because I've, I've read this and I've got, I've got some family that works there and I asked, asked a cousin of mine about it, and he, he says Purdue doesn't receive comp time.
Comp time is for governments under the Fair Labor Standards Act. It's nothing that in the, the private sector, you're required to pay them time and a half in overtime.
Not if he's salaried, he's salaried.
Salary, you're exempt from it.
This is what we're talking about.
Yeah, so they wouldn't have comp time.
Yeah, so he does not have comp time. I said, well, if you have to go down there two hours on a Saturday morning, do you get anything for it? He said, yeah, job Monday.
That's true.
Your project has to be complete, yes.
Has there been, I guess that's part of the reason, but there had to be something that spurred this. I, I know that we've been working on this all along, but I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that, that could probably be done by me because I wanted to move this forward for, for several reasons.
We almost took it off your blame box because she says it's been worked on for three years.
It has been worked on for three years, I haven't been on the committee, but when this came to me on, on my desk, part of that first three months, I was having, you know, things I had to do, I wanted to go ahead and move this forward.
Should have been working on Bennett.
I should have been working on Bennett, yeah. But, but part of it is, is the comp time, the way, the way our system is figured now that if an employee should either quit, be dismissed, or go on to green or patron.
Let's, let's talk about salaried employees, let's make this clear because we're talking on tape here, okay?
Okay, I'm saying if they should.
You just said employee, let's talk about.
Well, let's go with the exempt employee, if they should quit, be let go, go on, whatever. A lot of times, we would have a large amount of money if they, paying them back their vacation time, their comp time, their sick time. It was becoming very cost prohibitive. Waukesha County cannot afford to keep that up under that practice, and that's why we have decided to go ahead and move this forward at this time, you know. It's something like to say, I believe Sharon's been on this committee as well as Michelle, and who else was on your committee?
Actually, Ed Maureen Wayne, the prior HR director, Mike Thompson, that's how far back it goes. Ted Shea was at the beginning of the committee when we started looking at the manual.
So did the committee, did the committee take, because I've been on a lot of committees as well, did the committee take like a formal vote on this?
Well, we worked on it together, we talked through it, and we worked through it line by line.
In agreement that this is what they come from?
Yeah, yeah, each section.
I mean, we did that with the charter review too, but we also voted as far as.
Well, some of the, some of those employees that were on this committee have since retired before the, before the work was done.
Did they get an exit?
They got, some of them got some rather large exit money.
I had a lot of questions about this, so I asked Michelle for some information, and we've got a number, I'm not going to read her names now, okay? People that have retired. And it's amazing, we've got thirteen thousand, thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, twenty-four thousand, forty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, twenty-nine thousand dollars, thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. This is all time they've built up and, and when they retire or dismissed or whatever, they have to write them a check. That should, that should be, that's, I don't, I, I would like to know, and, and when we had early retirement, how much did that cost us? You know, and I noticed a couple of these people on this list was early retirement.
They've got five years towards it.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm just talking about what, what did it cost for built up?
Early retirement.
Early retirement, you know.
Well, I could tell you currently based, each year for the auditors, we pull our liability, our accrued liability. Currently, it's over three million for all the county employees.
So we owe three million right now in built up time.
Yes, various payouts of time.
There are three components.
Yes.
There are three components, you've got vacation time, you have.
I can't hear you.
Sorry.
There are, there are three components on the payout, comp time, and we're supposed to limit carryover on comp time to no more than eighty hours.
But that doesn't happen.
A year. It happened, we have very few exceptions to that. Vacation time and sick time. So if you don't, the county's practice has been that if you don't use your sick time, it continues to accumulate, and when you leave county employment, you get paid for all of your, your sick time. So for comparative.
I think it's a ratio.
You get a quarter of your sick time after ten years.
You get a quarter of your sick.
After ten years.
Ten years of service, you get a quarter of your sick time paid out.
Paid out.
In addition, yes, yes.
Does that sick time go towards retirement?
It also goes towards retirement, but that's in our pension plan, it goes towards retirement.
But what's happening, people are using their comp time or sick time, saving up their sick time and their vacation time.
If, if, if you want to, for comparative purposes, if you want to compare those three components to what happens in the private sector, as Michelle said, if you're an exempt employee in the private sector, you, you're, you get paid a salary and, and that's what you get paid.
And that's the way it usually works.
And you work the number of hours that you have to work in order to get the job done. Sick time, you're allotted sick time on an annual basis. If you need sick time, you demonstrate that it was a legitimate illness, and, and it's paid for up to the number of hours that you're eligible for, and it renews each year. You don't carry it over, and you certainly don't get paid at, at retirement or exit for, for not being sick. In the private sector, you would be paid out your unused vacation time if you left employment. So.
Well, that's not always true.
It's been my experience, it's been my experience. In the private sector, typically, private sector companies do not allow people to build up that kind of vacation time. You either, you've got to use it.
Yeah, you use it or lose it.
Yeah, they're, they're not calling it vacation, they're calling it personal time off.
Yeah, PTO is, is, is a movement right now in the private sector.
Vacation is recognized by the Department of Labor where you could, you cannot withhold it. If somebody doesn't give you proper notice, you have to pay it out.
There are two, I mean, again, in, in the private sector, there are always, in my mind, two issues with unused vacation time. I always, always, I always kept my eye on people who never wanted to take their vacation, especially if they were handling cash.
Have you been there for that?
The other thing is, is if people legitimately can't use their vacation time, then you've got a staffing problem. If you've got people who cannot take vacation, then you've got an organizational, structural problem.
Well, you also have people that can't take vacation, sometimes they'd rather have the pay and still work because they need the money. But if you've got somebody running your books and they just don't want to leave, you've got a problem.
Is, is there a, a time limit to use up a certain amount of comp time? Like, you've got to use up the accumulated comp time within thirty days or?
In the current manual, it says, it's very broad, it says try to use it as quickly as possible, but there is no end, there's no, currently it doesn't say, okay, if you don't use it in a year, then you lose it.
Right, I know a lot of organizations have time limit stipulations on there. And, and I say organizations because I hate comparing to the private sector because we're not the private sector, we're government. And it is a good idea to follow the private sector at times, but again, we're the government. But I was just wondering why there was never more stringent time limits on them.
That's, that's part of our correction in the manual because we have the same problem with holiday. Those that are in public safety can float their holidays when they work, and there's no limit to it. And as I pointed out in this memo, we have some that have over seven hundred hours in their bank right now. I believe three hundred, three hundred and some hours in there because they're just saving it.
When they, when they use their holidays, it's probably a good idea to use that first for vacation before the year's up, so you don't carry it over.
Three hundred and seventy-eight to seven hundred and fifty-six hours a holiday on the books for some employees.
So they can carry over holidays every year?
Because there's no limit on when they have to use them. So, and there's also, as your salary increases, so does the value.
Not state police. You either use it that year or you lost it.
That's one of the things we corrected in this manual.
Before that year was up.
In here, I need the cheat notes. Which, which parts of, which chapters represent vacation or comp or sick time?
That's in, that's chapter six, when we start talking about the various types of leave.
Yeah, and I read that, are you saying, are we establishing a used or losing policy?
As far as holiday, as far as holiday, not.
Why wouldn't we establish as far as sick time? Why would you accrue sick time?
We did make some changes to sick time, and we are putting some stipulations on it, you know, tying it into proper notice on your termination and various factors. But on personal, it's already, you have to use it by the end of the year. Holidays, we have, you have to use it by the end of the year or forfeit it. Sick time, as far as new employees, as of July first, when you're hired, you can no longer be paid any sick time when you leave. But it's hard to really zone in and change those long-term employees because some of them are expecting that compensation because it's what's in the current policy.
Really not changing anything for current employees other than the comp time.
No, it may, I'm looking forward. And the holiday, I am changing for the current employees as far as look, when you earn it, you have to use it.
You're not taking anything away from anybody.
Not.
You are changing or you want to change?
It is changing how soon they have to use it.
But it's got to be approved.
Yes.
Now, even for, even for long-term, I'm sorry. Even for long-term employees, as of July two thousand and fifteen, from here on forward, they would be required to follow the same process. They may be able to carry their sick or vacation or comp from prior to July two thousand and fifteen, but they would not be able to do that between fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, is that correct?
For holidays, yes.
So the policy would change for them?
Yes.
You're just saying that you're not going to take away what they were awarded in the past.
That's correct. The policy, it depends on which leave you're talking about, it's like vacation's staying the same. You got up to three sixty, and then if you don't use it by December thirty-first, you can cut back. Personal, staying the same, you use by December thirty-first, you lose it. Holiday, we're putting the holiday and the floating of the holiday, we are putting in restrictions. Okay, from this point forward, even if I have to move their old accruals into a bank somewhere, and I've talked about, I've talked to corrections and I'm director of correction multiple times about this, that from this point forward, you have to use it in that year or you lose it. So it's, it's.
And I'm assuming that in all circumstances, there could be exceptions made.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because I've been in that position before where I never took a vacation, I never, you know, by the end of the year, I had.
Were you handling cash?
They didn't let me handle cash.
Yes.
But, so I would assume that, that exceptions would be maybe approved by a department head and.
Yes, and recommended to human, yes, approved by department head, and of course, we need to know so that we can make sure everything's properly accounted for.
Okay, yeah, because I think that would be necessary, there are extenuating circumstances.
Yes, to everything, yes.
So, so on this comp time, that's, the stuff that's been accrued already will continue to count for a payout?
Yes, I'm not going to take away time.
But then starting July first, they can no longer continue to accrue this comp time?
That is correct.
Okay, there's no comp time.
There is going to, depends on your class, it gets complicated.
We're talking about exempt employees.
Yes, there's very.
I'm talking about six A right here.
Yes, mainly your exempt employees, you're talking upper management, you're talking higher level of superintendent, you're not talking the everyday, okay, you know, you may, yes.
Just, just clarify.
Yes. But, and there's also exceptions for that because then you have law enforcement, and that's a whole different category. So I'm hoping, keep it, I almost need a chart.
This probably took, you said it took three years, I can imagine.
She's done a great job with them, you all prepared to take time for your own thing. The committee did a really good job.
Everything legal in here, Mr. Baker?
What?
Everything legal in here?
I haven't reviewed any of this yet.
Everything legal in, have you, have I looked at?
I haven't reviewed everything.
This draft, the draft hasn't, does not have any major changes since it came back from the committee outside of formatting.
How long ago did the committee disband?
Oh, what was that? It has to be maybe a year.
We probably had, I'm going to say we probably had our last meeting. It was probably close to a year ago, wasn't it?
And it had made.
Changes had, changes had been made since the committee disbanded.
Changes, it was mainly a lot of formatting. I took the last draft, the committee did, and, and I think I added in the comp time. I did add in the comp time, and I clarified, so I did add in some parts exactly out of the charter when it comes to certain positions. So yes, changes have been made as far as making sure that it mapped exactly to the charter the jobs did and the responsibilities. But no, no major changes have been made as far as what the committee left it as they left it outside of regular formatting, grammatical, and going through and cleaning it up. You took, to understand the process, what they did is they took this old manual here, this is our current manual.
Right.
A Word document, saved as, and who knows if it was Word or Microsoft Power, or Word Perfect, who knows back then? We saved as, so we had to reformat the whole entire thing. And that's what major changes have been over the last few weeks.
What I, what I was going to ask when I first got this.
Table of contents, of course.
And what, skipping ahead a little bit, I would love to see that this draft come before us as most legislative documents do, where you have what's been added, what's been deleted.
I was getting ready to ask that with the shout.
I know what I'm asking, I know what I'm asking.
To take, to take the two documents and compare, considering that we reorganized it, you're going to have a big, if you take the two Word documents and you put, compare them.
Yeah, so you didn't just change some things, you reorganized the whole.
Yeah, the whole manual, you see, I summarized all the changes.
Won't be a side by side.
No.
That would be very difficult to do.
And to actually be able to comprehend with all the right, those frames.
The reason I say that is because.
We could give you the old manual.
Trying to do this, I've looked at the old, somehow or other, I had the old manual, it's still yet.
It's that old.
Gave it to you during orientation too, on a CD.
Trying to compare the two is an absolute nightmare of shifting from one to the other.
Well, that's why it took us as long as it did to plow through this. One of the things, and Sharon could comment on this, the, the, the current, the current manual, the manual that, that is in place now was actually prepared by employees.
Twelve years ago.
Twelve years ago, it was a document that was prepared by employees. And there were a lot of inconsistencies, there were some internal conflicts in the document. I think, yeah, I think, I think what you're asking for would be, okay, what are the substantive policy changes that would, would affect employees?
Exactly.
And I put that in the summary.
Probably crystallize that for you.
But, I mean, again, it is, I think the council would like, I mean, the reason I even ask is because the council would like to see an objective overview of how the changes were structured. Have you read this book all the way through?
Heck, no.
Okay.
If you read this all the way through, then you read this all the way through, you see they're not too.
Well, let me ask you, John, what, what do you mean by an objective, an objective overview?
To be able to, to come to, right now, from what we see, we have the, the changes that were requested and, and the draft here. I don't see a real clarification as to what it, you know, what it was and what it is now without being able to see the old one. I mean, you clearly have to look at the old document to know how the corrections were made, you clearly have to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I could print you out the old document and you can have them.
Like I said, I, I do it, yeah, I've got it on screen.
And that would be the easiest way outside of doing it a Word document comparison.
Well, I thought that too, you know, about how they.
You'll see.
Line stuff out, and then I got thinking, well, this is a completely re, it's a redrafted.
Totally reformed.
I've been messing with it ever since I got it last week. And it's, it's a lot to take in. But I don't, I, I really don't have a problem with it, I got some questions on more of it, but I mean, as it's presented to us, I think it's presented to us as probably as good as we're going to get it.
And I can give you a printed version of the old manual if you would like to.
That's okay, I appreciate that, that's okay.
Okay. And then we can read them.
We're just doing.
Other council members made one.
Other council members made one PDFs.
I gave every council.
Everybody asked.
Yes, yes, during orientation.
But, but the intent is, and I agree with you, John, is see what kind of impact it has, both financially and time-wise, and if it's consolidated to where we can say, okay. That's, that's the crux of, I think, what the employees are interested in.
And that's what I attempted to do.
That's a sum, in the summary.
Yes.
But the summary includes everything.
Or everything, anything.
And I don't want to know everything. I only want to know what kind of small impact.
This is, this is a summarize that I can get.
So, so does definitions impact financially or time-wise? Well, we could cross that one off then, can't we?
Well, in, in the back of the memo, you would, I put definitions, no changes to definitions, basically. Basic updates and clarifications as a result of changes in legislation such as Affordable Care Act.
So if we went through these new titles one by one, then we should be able to pick out every change.
Every single thing is in here.
And if I asked you what the scope and authority of the personnel system was, you could tell me, and then it wouldn't be any different here than it would be in the draft.
Well, it would, for the scope and authority, it would because we have a new charter.
All right.
So I took it out of the compare to two thousand and three, there was a different roles.
Okay, so that takes care of two.
There is different, you know, you had a council former government, now we have executive, yes.
I mean, I guess, I mean, I'm sure the concern is that we don't want to step on any landmines here, you know, stuff where we approve this, and all of a sudden, it's like, oh, wait a second, you know, this small thing turns into a big thing, you know, it's, it looks like a small thing does, but this is actually a big thing, you know, I mean, that's.
Isn't there a public hearing though, so if there is any major landmines and you, the employees, you'll hear their feedback if they're that.
Yeah, let me ask, yeah, I would, I would, let me ask you this.
I've already gave it to the, you know, the sheriff's department, I mean, there's.
Could we set up some type of a system where employees can anonymously send comments?
Well, we already have it.
Yeah, they already have it, or.
Potluck.
Can we go over marketing?
Well, we have it, we have it established for, I think, unethical, if they see unethical.
You don't get anonymous stuff in mail? I do.
It's established.
Understanding what you're asking.
It's established for some type of unethical behavior.
Understanding what you're asking for.
But if, if there was a problem with employees, they would be, they would be first to give feedback.
Some may be afraid they'd lose their job if they said anything.
Not if they come to HR, they won't.
I, I don't, I don't know, I'd like to have, I'd like to have.
I'm, I'm dead serious here, I, I would like to have some type of venue for the employees to say, here, you don't realize, John, but you know, page thirty-two is going to kill me.
I appreciate that.
I want them to be able to say this.
Are we going to have to present fifteen hundred of these copies to the employees?
No.
And let them go through it?
No, I'm assuming it's online, they can look at it online.
Yes, they've been, there are actually, many employees are waiting for the updated version. They keep asking.
Yeah, I would like a letter to go out to the employees saying, your personnel manual is changing, here it comes, make sure you read it because you're only going to get one shot.
Send me, yes, send me back.
But I do think that they should be able to do it in an anonymous form because you can't tell me that someone's going to want to go into your office and say, I want all of my overtime, I want all, and they're not. It's going to, I'm, I'm afraid they're going to be embarrassed to do that, so I'd like to have some venue.
Actually, I, I actually look forward to their feedback.
I understand, they may not, yeah.
They, they, I try, I attempt not to establish a scary relationship with employees.
Well, I mean, they could communicate with us on the council because we are not, we're not their bosses, and we, I mean, I mean, if they email us.
They can communicate with us, is that right?
The, a county employee could email.
Once we advertise it for public hearing, you're going to get.
But I mean, I mean, as far as an email, what type of response are we allowed to get engaged in with an executive staff? If they approach us?
Well, if they approach you, you can hear the comments they have.
Well, if you remember, when I first came in, I said.
Well, if you remember, when I first came in, I said, I would do all two, engage with employees.
Yeah, I know, we try to stay with the charter.
Previous, well, it's just, I'm in charge of employees, but I, but the previous administration, you had to go through Wayne in order to ask a question of an employee. That's not the case with me. I want you to engage, because you all-
You just can't.
If, if you wouldn't mind, I mean, I would like, I would appreciate, maybe it's overkill, but you can't, you can't do too much sometimes. If, if we, if you could send a letter out letting employees know that they can respond to you, to Michelle, to Wayne, or to any individual council members.
Yeah, I could put it out, I would, I would, I would personally like the feedback as it is, if you are administering the manual, if you don't mind. I'm open to any feedback any employee gives me, so.
That'd be great, because like Mark said, there, there could be landmines all over that, and we wouldn't really know.
I have to trust Michelle to know the legal part of the landmines, okay? And that's, that's what she does.
Right.
But, you know, I, I agree with you, you know, let the employees look at it and go, I mean, this is not something we're trying to get through to next meeting, we're trying to-
Oh, yeah.
Bring, bring us into twenty thousand fifteen.
We gotta give, we gotta give our legal guys a chance to look at it, too.
Well, they got a chance to look at it, yeah, I mean, it was sent down to them, and they still have, their due diligence on it, I'm sure.
Some other things I found, you've changed it.
I'm sorry.
Nah, just have my hand up, that was a-
I know, you did, you did.
Michelle, Bob, this is long overdue, it really is, and, and I'd like this discussion about listening to employees, because ever since word got out that we were gonna move forward with bringing this to the table in the work session, I've been getting phone calls that employees are scared to death, and I don't blame them. The government jobs are good jobs, and many times, people work for the government, for the benefits, because we typically have attractive benefits. So I, I do applaud you for saying, let's listen to the employees, we need to.
We're, we're looking down a long road for our OPEB obligation, too.
I understand.
And that's, that could be something that we change and try to keep our bond rating at even a better rating than what we have now, so.
That's a serious obligation, so, and all this, the comp time, the carrying over, that's gonna be part of it, so.
Joe, yeah, I have a couple things, two or three things, three things. Pardon? You have sticky notes.
He has read it, obviously, John.
Sometimes I get involved. You're, you're gonna be able to do drug testing for all employees now. Before, it was just safety, people that were in a safety situation, truck drivers, blah, 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 right?
Yes, and then to be, and to have that separation between safety and non, it's just so, it's, it's more difficult than just do drug, drug testing for all county employees.
There's now zero tolerance.
No tolerance.
Random.
Yes, random.
For everyone.
Reasonable suspicion.
Reasonable suspicion.
Upon hire.
So I, I- I took two drug tests instead.
The other, Wayne's blocking the-
The other thing is-
Yeah, we did-
In the, in the, in sixteen, you're talking about reporting and receipts of vom- I've got two more questions. So, reporting and receipts, travel receipts, reimbursement receipts, blah, 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 are they gonna be kept in one place, or are they gonna be kept in each department? I think it would be better from being one place, that the internal auditor decided he wanted, or we directed him to look at them.
With, they, they are in the depart, are you talking about the-
They're kept in each department.
Yeah, they're kept in each department.
Shouldn't they be kept centrally after, like, a-
Well, they all come through the executive's office to be approved, otherwise-
What would be easiest for you, Steve, if you were to audit?
Current practice is, is to go through the executive's office, and that was a sample I pulled last time we argued, and that was-
So that's good enough.
The problem is, half of them weren't sent up to the executive.
Oh, so that, that would be a breakdown there, huh?
That's a problem.
Okay. Which, I ain't gonna ask you which departments, but I guess that needs to be addressed. So is it better to have them centrally stored?
For audit purposes, sure.
Okay. The other thing is that no county out, no county fund shall be used to purchase alcohol. Now, this is in the travel, meals, and lodging. Is that standard for the whole county that no money-
And that's in the current manual, too, yes.
Okay.
That's not a change, Joe.
That's not a change.
No, but what I'm saying, is that standard for the whole county? Well, how, how do we buy the alcohol for the transportation meeting that we have at the civic site each year?
I, I, I don't know.
Transportation meeting-
Back here, I bought it. I bought it.
You bought, is that, is that in practice every year?
It hasn't always been done that way, but it's been done that way, last, last year it was done that way, and it's been done some other times.
So this, county doesn't reimburse you for that?
No.
Okay, all right.
Can I go back to the drug testing?
Yeah.
I do wanna point out that employees do not like the separation and classification, they also want everybody to be treated the same, like, it's, so, I just wanna make that clear, 'cause it, they don't like it that they can work some, next to somebody, and they're non-safety sensitive, and they get a different treatment than the one that has the positive drug testing, is terminated on the spot. I wanna make that clear. So that's a major cleanup there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Also, I need some explanation on this reimbursement expenses. Say, council members or executive goes to Annapolis for Mako. Does that, we go and come back? Does that justify buying breakfast or lunch while you're gone? You're, you leave at eight, and you're back by three. How does that, explain that? I see all this in here, I just wanted to kinda make sure.
Yeah.
We had a time limitation.
I see it here, it says seven AM, it travels between seven AM and nine, you get twenty-five percent?
As a per diem.
As a per diem.
Yes.
How's, it says over here the per diem is set by the GSA. Is that a standard every day, like gas mileage?
Yes.
What is that?
Six cents a mile.
No, not gas mileage.
There's, there's a, there, there's a standard, Joe, where those per diem costs are done, and they're broken out actually by locale. So, for instance, if you went up to New York, and you had breakfast, breakfast is gonna cost you a lot more in New York than it's gonna cost you here in Salisbury, or, or in Ocean City. So, part of the discussion that we had when we were going through that whole, that whole part of the manual was, when people are traveling, you know, they, they may or may not have time, really, to have breakfast or have lunch. So, you know, they may have dinner, and they're limited to a certain amount of money for dinner, where they haven't had lunch, they haven't had breakfast. So, what we were saying was, we'll give you a per diem based on your travel times, if you're getting meals, if meals are provided, you can't reimburse for that, like, if you go to Mako, and we've got lunch up there, if you wanna get a different lunch, that's your problem.
Yeah.
But we did stipulate that even with the per diem, we want to see receipts for what you purchased, so that we can verify that-
You're just not taking the money.
You're just not taking the money. I'm, I, I, I'm not a fan of per diems, where we say, okay, you're going away for three days, you know, here's seventy-five dollars.
Right, right.
I wanna see that you spent the money and what you spent it on, and it was appropriate.
There was a, there's an IA, if I could interject, there was an IA report, Steve, and I think you made some queries in, in relation specifically to how the county was dealing with, if it were per diems or gas expenses, et cetera.
Yeah, well, uh, my name's Steve Roser, I'm the internal auditor. We, we did a travel audit recently, and, and what we found were that the, were several things, but the per diems allowed by the county were a little bit higher than the GSA numbers, that, this will sort of take care of that.
This will take care of that, you say?
I would think, if they're gonna go by the GSA numbers, of course, then, then the county wouldn't be higher than GSA. The, the other thing is, what we recommended was that we do a cost benefit between doing just what Wayne said, you're going away for three days, here's seventy-five bucks, and the bookkeeping expense of shuffling through all these receipts, to see what you spent, cutting all these checks to reimburse you for your meals. There was also a problem with local travel.
Let me stop you real quick. I thought Wayne said he did want the receipts.
I do want receipts.
Wayne says he does want-
Even though those are per diem, I wanna see what you spent the money on.
Okay, and that's, that's fine.
And if you didn't, if you didn't spend it all, I want it back.
That was my question.
Agreed, agreed, okay.
And you don't, and you don't spend it on-
Well, that, that, then they've done, apparently, they've done the cost benefit of, of doing all this paperwork versus giving people a lump check, and determining that doing the paperwork is cheaper, which is entirely possible, and I, and I would bow to that.
Okay, and your, your third point, who were getting ready to make before I interrupted you?
Local travel.
The, the local travel, that, that will, I think that'll help with that some, too, that we have a lot of little TV, local travel vouchers that we get, that, that I think maybe some of this will address. I, I've been a big proponent for this for a long time, if I can make one other comment. Many of the audits that, that I've put forth go to the, the manual for different reasons. We did FLSA audit for the sheriffs and so on. I've been an advocate of rewriting this manual for a long, long time. What we found when we tried to go into the old manual is it's, it's so old, it is, it doesn't have any relationship to the way we're governing ourselves these days.
Right.
It, it doesn't have any relationship to reality on the ground, to management practices. And my suggestion would be to look at this as a complete, brand-new manual, as if the county started business now.
Thanks, Steve.
Joe, I think you were on.
No, I've got through the-
I got a couple more sticky, sticky ones.
Michelle, did you wanna continue on?
I don't know what chapter we were on.
Six.
Six, sixteen.
We can break it anytime.
I think we, yeah, we should take each part, and we should break it down in order to go through it.
Maybe we can do that, if you could set us up some time, you know, a half hour from the next couple meetings, and we can go ahead and go through, you know, one through three, three through six.
All right.
We're not rushing it, we're finalized.
And get, give it all time to vet this properly.
I guess my question is, do we have any time limit? I mean, this has been going on for three years, so I don't think the council's gonna take three years.
You got everything set up down here for July first, right?
Yeah, I think-
To do the flip.
Yeah, I think that if we could, we would wanna codify this before July one, because as we formulate the budget, we're anticipating that this is the manner in which we're gonna be operating this, this next fiscal year.
All right, and what are the council duties on this? How much?
Just standard approve, and we'll go on.
Okay, all right, that's it. Rubber stamp, rubber stamp.
Eventually, it'll go through an approval process and a formal vote.
Council has to approve the manual.
But we can modify it?
And you, you can offer amendments, and any amendments to the personnel manual have to be approved by council.
All right.
Mark, it's, it'll, it'll be passed by legislative act, and you can amend.
You're saying, I'm sorry, Sharon. Yes, Ed.
You have to develop, you have to adopt it by the end of April and make it effective in July.
This has to be adopted by the end of April?
Yes, it's like in the next couple of weeks.
It has to be adopted by the twenty-first of April, our last meeting in April next.
Can we, can we carry on it? Get that out of the way? We haven't even, well, we haven't even-
But that's if we want to do it by July first.
Right.
Well-
You can make it effective whenever.
You, you don't have to have it by July first, but anybody you hire, you need to do the same thing you did with the new finance director, make them understand they're gonna come under that, under this, if, if you don't, if we don't get it approved by July first, is what I'm saying.
That's not, that's actually, that's not in the manual, it has the current, we, we can wait till we go to that chapter. There is ideas thrown out that have not been incorporated in the manual officially as far as the approving of time. We put some caps on it, but I guess these ideas are for further discussion, but the one, converting to a pay, a pay time off day is not in this manual.
No. So you've got something else you wanna add to this? Is that what you're saying?
Any personal amendment?
Not right now, no.
I think our intent is to develop the budget on the assumption that these are the personnel policies that we're going to follow. You know, that's not carved in stone, I mean, we still have a budget process we go through, and if we decide, you know, after July one, that there's something in here that we were collectively uncomfortable with, that we wanna change, you know, you do a budget amendment, you know, to address that, if necessary. I doubt that you'd have to. I mean, I really don't think it's gonna have, you know, it's more of a procedural issue. I think, you know, I think employees need to understand, you know, if they're used to comp time, for instance, let's use that, if you're used to comp time, you know, beginning this date, you know, comp time is, is, is gonna go away.
Right.
If you travel, beginning X date, you know, this is the manner in which we're gonna reimburse travel. Those were-
We could actually amend the current, we could amend the current.
You could do it piecemeal, but you don't wanna do that.
The current, oh, the current manual.
What is this called?
Personnel manual, thank you.
We could amend the current, our personnel manual with just, I mean, if those three issues are of key importance.
You mean, you, we could amend it just right now?
As a patch.
As a patch, yeah. I mean, we know it's what's gonna follow.
The problem is, everything is in multiple locations in the current manual, it's not in a clean format, you know, okay? It's hard to-
I'm convinced.
Just for common purposes, what if we went ahead and set public hearing for twenty-first, same day as the other public hearing, scheduled next work session, first meeting in April? If that weren't enough time to get through the work session, we can always delay the public hearing if we had to, but we could go-
I haven't even prepared a legislative bill yet.
Okay.
I think we're in no time.
And, and the, after the public hearing, aren't we committed to a particular time period where we have to act, or is that not true?
From the date of introduction, you've got sixty days, sixty days.
The date of introduction.
From the date of introduction, yeah. So, yeah, you can postpone a public hearing, but you're still within that sixty day, sixty day drop date, if you don't-
Okay, so, we're not committed to any particular time period once there's a public hearing, and a public hearing does not have to be held in the same as the introduction. You can have a public hearing anytime, and do the introduction after.
Of course, yeah. Of course, yeah.
Or does the public hearing have to be on?
You can't, you can't stay it up too far, but you can extend it.
I would, I would just suggest that, that, that I don't think council should feel that there's some undue pressure to rush through this, as Michelle said. You know, we haven't revisited this since two thousand two, so I think you should take whatever time you think you need to take in order to be comfortable with what's being proposed. And from our standpoint-
So we can change the date in here from July, August first if we have to.
We can work through that, we can work through that. I think, I think the timing, I think the timing is less important than substance of what's being proposed, and your comfort with the substance of what's being proposed. So I would encourage you to be, be deliberate and be comfortable with whatever conclusions you arrive at. Don't, don't feel that there's some artificial pressure to rush this.
We'll make our budget so that it's not affected by this, and then if we're good enough to get it done by August, and we've got savings, and so here, we got a carrying over next year.
Has there been any cost analysis done on what we can save?
Yes, yes, yes.
And what would that be?
There's so many sections.
You don't have a total?
A total, no, I didn't add them together.
Is it more than a ten thousand dollars? Is it more than fifteen hundred?
It depends on what it is.
Give us the best case scenario.
So much a year, so much over twenty years, I mean, I'm-
Well, I thi, I think what, I think what Michelle could do, I mean, let's talk about things like, let's talk about, like annual comp time. We could certainly go back and track, you know, the past five years, what comp time amounted to for the past five years. We could take a look at the, the, what, what payouts for sick time.
I think the council's in agreement that it's been a bit of a huge policy without sending her through all those hoops.
I'm just saying, if you're looking for some means of quantifying, gee, what's the fiscal impact of making these changes? I think we could do that by looking at what it's cost us in the past, and you could, and you could gauge, well, gee, going forward, then that would be saved. That's the easiest way.
I attempted to break down the values on this summary. For example, if you go to holiday, we currently have over seven hundred thousand dollars of accumulated holiday on the books.
Chapter, is that six?
So, this is, um-
It's on the fifth note sheet.
This is chapter six, yes, it's the last paragraph.
So if everybody wanted their holiday paid once?
You'd have to pay seven hundred thousand dollars to get them off the books right now.
It's a big number.
Okay, a little bit higher up, we talked about the snowstorms, and how we handle our snowstorms versus other governments and leave, they use a liberal leave policy. We have no liberal leave policy. And because we have an administrative leave policy that has a county declared emergency, we pay, I guess, emergency overtime pay is up to fifty thousand dollars a day. Versus if, so, you know, those type of analysis. Go ahead.
I was only gonna point out one thing, the leave, the holiday's not-
Bringing Mike forward, Ed.
The holiday time, I think you said's public safety? Is doing all the holidays?
Actually, it's at multiple locations.
Okay, but you, if you try to change, it's a, it's a collective bargaining, subject to collective bargains, you're gonna have to-
That's, that, we don't have the problem with the bargaining unit, it's at corrections.
You're talking about, you're talking about the holiday? Yeah.
Yes, that's, yes, corrections.
Okay, then you, you can change it for them, but you're not gonna be able to change it for the police.
The, yeah, they have a copy in the manual, and they recognize that their collective bargaining agreement-
And the issue with corrections is that they went through a long period of time where they had a lot of vacancies, and we've closed that gap, but that liability built up during that period of time. And, and this liability also built up during the years that we were furloughing because you still had to get the work done, so, but, long and short of it is, is there, there, there are practices that when you look forward, when you cast our fiscal challenges forward, and you look at these policies, you know, they just don't work, they don't work.
I just had a question, I'm trying to digest the liberal leave versus the mandatory leave. You wanna add the liberal leave in here?
The actual terminology, yes, the term liberal.
So if, if you have liberal leave, doesn't that mean somebody's gotta come open the building just in case I wanna come to work that day?
Usually, well, yes. There's not, even though there's a lot of essential employee here, I mean, you're gonna, if there's-
Do you understand what I just said?
Yeah, but general services, they're essential. So, so they're gonna have the building.
You read back to what Matt was trying to move this forward.
Yeah.
What, what, where would we go? Sometimes that depends on you, Mr. Baker.
I mean, it depends, I mean, once we start the legislative process, then it's gonna be, as I said, fairly quick process, introduce the bill, schedule it for public hearing. If you wanna do that before you've had any more work sessions, that's fine, or if you wanna have work sessions afterwards, that's fine. I mean, once I start the legislative process, you have to go to vote within sixty days.
I would like to think that, I mean, the council, of course, wants time to read this thoroughly, but I think also we would wanna hear from, and, and then the employees need to have the time to read it so that they can then come up here and express their concerns publicly. So would you say by the next meeting, if we held a public hearing on this?
Well, you have to enter, it's a legislative bill, am I correct, Mr. Baker? So you have to introduce it.
No, that's what I was asking earlier, I don't think you have to introduce it to have a public hearing.
No, you, yeah, you don't have to introduce it.
No, but you still-
No, I appreciate, because that's what I'm saying.
So are you going to let, intro it?
Yeah, you have to have two public hearings.
You're gonna have to have two public hearings.
You're gonna have to have two.
Yes, yes.
If you vote on it.
Right, because I think that the council would like to hear what opinions they, the employees might have. And you guys, let me know what you think, because we don't have to do that.
I, I do agree with you, and, and Mr. Strasberg brought up a good point, he said he didn't feel like they wanna, think they're putting pressure on us, and, and I don't think they are, but there's a sense of pressure. So I, I do want us to take our time, listen to the employees, because there's a lot of them that aren't gonna be able to come here for that one meeting that we have, so.
So you're thinking about two weeks, in two weeks, if we had a public hearing, employees to express this?
I was gonna say, it definitely should be a night meeting, if we're talking about county employees, as soon as they get up there, speak during a day meeting, they'll all have the questions, so, so night meeting definitely.
One thing that needs to be explained right off, we're not taking any, I mean, I've had county employees say, ah, you're taking away our retirement.
That's not even in the manual.
They don't have to do retirement, I mean, they can take the retirement pretty much out of the book, that's another whole-
And that's why we need counsel.
That's actually a pension plan, not the manual.
The, the, I, I think you're pragmatic, next steps, to be honest with you are, give council the time to really thoroughly read, ask any questions you have, shoot the questions to Michelle.
Right.
And give employees time to weigh in on what their concerns are and or thoughts are. And I think you should provide a thirty-day period for that.
Thirty days?
Thirty days. Yeah.
I'll take your advice.
It's a lot, I mean, I mean, let's take some guy who's, you know, making, you know, twenty thousand dollars a year, twenty-two thousand dollars a year, and he's gonna have to read, he or she's gonna have to read through this and understand it, and understand what the possible impact is on them. I don't think we even wanna give the appearance that we're trying to rush this through.
All right, that's a good point, Greg.
I have to be, and, and I, I also have to be given the opportunity to clarify any misunderstandings. That's where the dialogue is important. It's like, you know, someone can read this and assume it applies towards them, or assume that it's gonna affect them, and it may not happen, it might be a totally different class of employee, so.